Good evening, everyone. It's right at six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get our first regular City Council meeting of November underway. Please rise. We'll begin with the invocation and the salute to the flag led by Mr. Jansen.
Let us pray. Good gracious, heaven and father, we just ask you to lead us and guide us as we make decisions to build this city on the foundation that is your rock. Lord, we just ask you that you look out over those that are suffering from COVID and the families of those. And, Lord, please put your hand and blessings upon our first responders and our military as they move forward to keep our peace and safety in play. Lord, we thank you mostly for your son, Jesus Christ, for it's in his name we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This meeting is called to order. Come out up there. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Yuma?
Here.
Councilmember Golding?
Here.
Councilmember Jansen?
Here.
Councilmember Beza?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
Mayor Hoffman?
Here.
Moving on to approval of the minutes. Item A.
I approve the minutes from the council briefing held on October 11th, 2021.
Second? We have a motion and second. Any discussion from council? Ms. Golding.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just, I felt that there was some information that was not included in the minutes that would be important to include in the minutes, and it has to do with Mr. Barron's conversation with Waste Management and the fact that they mentioned that there were three options, with the first option being to not change anything at this time because they're seeing improvement over the last two to three weeks, and then the other two options don't really result in a large enough impact. And I thought that information was pretty important to include in our minutes, so I'd like to, I have, I can read it, but I'd like to make a motion that we add. Mr. Barron mentioned that Waste Management discussed three options, with the first option being to not recommend any changes to the schedule at this time because they're seeing improvement over the last two to three weeks, and the other two options don't result in a large enough impact.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second to amend the minutes. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of amending the minutes as proposed by Ms. Golding, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment carries. Back to the original minutes. Any discussion? All in favor of the minutes as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item B.
I approve the minutes from the regular City Council meeting held on October 18th, 2021.
Second? We have a motion and second. Any discussion by council? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item C.
I approve the minutes from the council workshop held on October 25th, 2021. Charter review.
Second? We have a motion and second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes all passed. Any announcements from the council? Ms. Golding?
I have a few announcements. First of all, I want to say the mayor and I, I don't know, maybe some of the other council members were there too, but the mayor--
They were in costume.
Right. And I didn't recognize them, but I did go to the kids' Halloween party that the, our Jackson Beach Police Department, our Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, and the Jacksonville Fire and Rescue Department put on in South Jackson Beach. And it was awesome. It was amazing to see, there was a huge line of people, why did they pass the candy center to get in? And the kids were just having a great time. So, great job to everybody, the police department, the CPAA, and the Jacksonville Fire and Rescue. I'm so glad that we do something like that. And then I also want to shout out to Sergeant Tater, who was on the news and promoted it, and I think that probably is what got a lot of people out to the event. And then, secondly, I wanted to mention, before I left, saw a little really close to Fletcher High School, and I could hear the Fletcher Band playing, practicing, and I just loved the band. I was in the band. I know the mayor, she and I both played Clinton, I think, right? So, anyway, I wanted to mention to everybody that the Fletcher Band is going to have a community performance on Saturday, November 13th, at 5:00 p.m. at the Fletcher Stadium. I did this last year, went to it, and it's great. It's just, it's a free performance. You just go to the stadium and you can watch the band do their performance, and they do it. They really work hard to put this performance together, so it's a great opportunity to get out there and see it if you've not seen it. And then last but not least, I wanted to mention that Beaches Watch has a meeting this Wednesday, November 3rd, at 7:00. It's a virtual meeting, and the topic is the state of the St. John's River. Jimmy Ork, who's with the St. John's River people, will be a speaker, as well as Dr. Pinto, who worked on the St. John's River report that just came out. So, should be a very, very interesting meeting. Anybody who would like to join it virtually, just go to beacheswatch.com, and you can find a Zoom link on the events area of that page.
Thank you, Ms. Golding. Mr. Metzger?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple announcements. First off, with the Halloween party yesterday at Sunshine Park, missed it, but I was there in spirit, and I saw it was a great success. I'm happy we do that kind of stuff in this community, not just for the community, but for the kids. And second, kudos to our police department. I know you guys have made some significant arrests, and I just want to say I appreciate you guys very much. I know some weren't on the media, but I just want you guys to know that I appreciate it, and you guys are working hard, so keep it up, and thank you very much.
Mr. Metzger, I wanted to echo my compliments on the kids' Halloween party, especially during such a busy weekend for our police department and even our citizens on patrol and our CPAA volunteers, to put that much effort into a really great event. It was a lot of fun. I think we cleaned out, I hear we cleaned out CVS out of candy. We did two CVSs out of candy. And there were several runs. I asked if they put on the license sirens for the candy runs. No one will tell me if they, no one will confirm or deny. But I think it's warranted. So, it was a great event. Thank you. I hope we see more of that. Also, I can't remember what day it was, but there was, the Parks and Rec Department, along with our consultants, hosted an open house to discuss our urban trails project, and that came really quickly on the heels of an open house down at Gonzales Park. So, it's really great to see so much positive community involvement impacting the future of our parks and our urban trail system. So, since basically the entire department is here, I wanted to say thank you for heading those up, especially two pretty big projects, kind of right on the heels of each other. And since Lenny's here, I will plug the Beeches Veterans Day Ceremony, which will be on November 11th at 9:00 a.m. down in our sister city of Atlantic Beach. It's two towns over, but it's worth the drive at the Veterans Memorial Park there. You may not know where it is, but you've driven past it a million times. It's where the huge American flag is, right beyond Mayport Road if you're heading west. So, it's open to all. It's a really impactful event, and it is a beaches event, so I encourage you to attend if you're looking for a way to honor our veterans next week. So, that's it for announcements. To courtesy of the Florida Visitors, the only speaker card that I have is attached to an agenda item. So, we'll go ahead and start. We've got a fun meeting today, I think. I'm going to start optimistically, but I think this is going to be a fun meeting, but I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Stokes, to introduce our first guest.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, I am delighted to welcome Brad McGarry to Jackson Beach City Council. He's currently the president and CEO of Gator Bowl Sports. He started his career, has had a very, very interesting career. He started it at the University of Georgia, where he went to undergrad and starred on the tennis team. He was also the assistant athletic director under Jeremy Foley at Florida. It's very interesting to me that he was at both. And then came back to Georgia to serve over 10 years as the athletic director, retiring at the end of last year. Just this year, he was named president and CEO of Gator Bowl Sports, and I am personally honored to serve under his leadership on the Chairman's Club Committee. So, welcome, Ms. McGarry.
Thanks, Chad, and thanks, Mayor, for allowing me a few minutes today to just talk about Gator Bowl Sports a little bit. And first of all, let me just say it's a privilege to be here. I have big shoes to fill with Rick Cantlin, who did this for almost three decades, so very fortunate to be here. But Gator Bowl Sports, our biggest thing that we have going on is a tax layer Gator Bowl, which is going to be on the 31st, New Year's Eve day morning, 11:00 a.m. kickoff between a representative from the SEC and the ACC. The great news is that leading up to that event will certainly be showcasing all of this area, and that goes from the city all the way to Villa Island, down to St. John's County, but really probably one of our most well-attended event is the Pepper Avenue that is held here on December 30th, the night for the games. Katie Cox, who leads our marketing effort, showed me a number of pictures today. It showed the amount of people that attend this from each school. The bands are there. We're very proud to have the Paris Island Marine Band again here this year. So, I think those are things that really, really will brighten up the experience and really showcase everything we have to offer in Dugald County, and things that people don't even realize until they get here and see everything. So, we're excited about that part. We'll also stage our will call for tickets to the game, which drags a lot of people here also, because may not have to go into town to get their tickets. They'll be able to do this here. But I know the tremendous support we receive, the assistance we receive from everyone in past years, speaking on behalf of them, is greatly, greatly appreciated. So, a lot of good things going on. We also have the FSU Florida baseball game, March 29th, and we also are really involved with Gator Bowl charities. We sponsored the Greater Jacksonville Pop Warner 10 and 11 Year Old Championships yesterday in the stadium, started at 9:00 with four games and ended up about 5:00. But if you could see those little kids run around that stadium where the Jaguars play and the day before where Florida and Georgia played, that really makes your heart feel great, because these are chances that these young kids get to enjoy. I think the coaches took it a little bit more seriously than the kids did, okay? But it was fun to watch. We had a great turnout. A lot of people got to watch their young children play. It was something that really made our, warmed our hearts. We have, we have several things that have gone throughout the year that are charitable, and we just want to be good partners in the community and be able to kind of spread the wealth to everyone when we have two great teams. And again, we won't know those teams until December 5th, but we know that we'll have two great brands here, two great institutions that will really add a lot to the community, as well as we're able to expose them to the great things that we have in this area. So, I'm really proud to lead this effort. I've got a great staff, and really I have to lean on them, because I'm a good listener, and I want to be sure that we do things the right way, and I can assure you, we'll be great partners in the community. So, I don't want to bear any questions or anything that may be in place. If not, I'll step out and get out of the way.
So, just in case this point was missed, the Gator Bowl, the pet rally is actually held at Deck the Chair, so it is all in there with everything else that's going on up there. And my question is, should Sandy and I bring our clarinets for that? George Allen is also in the marching band, so we could--
Susan?
Trump.
Trump.
I play the trumpet.
And Trump, oh. City Council marching band is happening.
I'm not playing against the Marine Band, but we're really, really excited about the partnership we have. Appreciate everybody that has a part in playing into that relationship.
Thank you. We have a question from Ms. Golding?
I just have a statement. I'm hoping, maybe Chad and I are hoping that Auburn will be in the Gator Bowl this year, so that would be pretty awesome.
Well, I know you're hoping that they win Saturday against A&amp;M, and then they've got to play that team across the state in Auburn this year. So, if Auburn takes care of business, they may not be able to play in our game. So, you know, I know you're hoping you win out so that you can play another game, which, but it's all good. There are a lot of great teams still out there playing. We only have three or four weeks left, so time to tell.
Must be nice to have that much hope for your college team.
Gators are looking like they could possibly be here for that Gator Bowl.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, if you're wondering why the council chambers are full tonight, we have representatives from our Jackson Beach lifeguards, from both our Ocean Rescue, as well as our volunteer lifesaving corps. I asked Max a few months ago if we could do sort of a wrap-up, as we were hearing some of the numbers of the amount of saves going on, and some of the stories of what you all were encountering out on the beach. I thought this was something that would maybe be an annual tradition to start at the end, when we're well cleared this summer, although there's still plenty of people out there on that beach, but to come and kind of report out and give us some statistics and present a couple of awards. So, we have Max and Rob Emmaheiser here, who are going to present on behalf of our Jackson Beach lifeguards.
Thank you very much. My name is Max Veran with Jackson Beach--
My name is Max Veran with Jackson Beach Ocean Rescue. This is Captain Rob Emmaheiser with Jackson Beach Ocean Rescue as well. For the sake of time for the city council, we're going to go through this pretty high level overview. If you have any questions, please feel free to stop, but also if there's any follow-up, please reach out at any time. We're going to do this presentation as an overall encompassing volunteer lifesaving corps and Jackson Beach Ocean Rescue Division as Jackson Beach Ocean Rescue lifeguards. Volunteer lifesaving corps this year was made up of approximately 85 active members. I say approximately because we have a lot of alumni that came back to sit a couple days here and there. They're not part of the active non-retired members, however, they are active lifeguards, and this is our cadre of volunteers this year. Our City of Jackson Beach Ocean Rescue Division staffed the beach this year at an old-time record calls for service. We were low when it came to employment numbers, but that did not stop our team. We're very, we're very successful in all calls for service, as well as manning the beach, even all the way up to this last weekend where we were still staffing towers. Last year in 2020, our calls for service were very high, and during the start of COVID, we saw peak calls where we were rescuing 20 people a weekend, looking at 39, a record over a weekend period right before COVID happened. And we're still on track to double these numbers for this year. From January 2021 to October of 2021, we responded to 1,733 calls for service. The biggest number out of that is the 99 after-hours incidents. Between the time that the lifeguards leave the lifeguard station until they come back, myself, as well as Captain Emmaheiser and the team of Jackson Beach lifeguards, responded 99 times to after-hour emergencies. And that's just a really record number as we start seeing incidents happening after hours, to the point to where this number actually was reduced in late May, where the Ocean Rescue Division altered their staffing levels to ensure that we could have officers on scene an hour to two hours after the lifeguards leave and an hour before the lifeguard leaves. If we did not alter that staffing level, we could definitely see the after-hour incidents in almost probably the 200s. The other number to really look at is this 21,250 hours. That is how many hours the volunteer lifesaving corps volunteered between January of 2021 and October of 2021. We're going to go through different sections of the areas of importance for the Ocean Rescue Division and the volunteer lifesaving corps, and Captain Emmaheiser will join in at any time. One of the very first things that we implemented last year, once we started seeing an influx of incidents, was the beach and ocean safety notification system. We implemented a system to where people can opt-in to receive beach and ocean safety notifications, and we did that through the partnership of the City of Jacksonville's Alert Jack system. Currently, when we made the presentation, we were at 872 registered, and we're almost going to be at that 900 mark when I looked at it last. The other thing that we did on a preventative measure is, we always receive phone calls, you know, what's the beach conditions like? We always receive information from beachgoers, you know, what are the conditions like? So, we went one step further. We partnered with a beach laboratory in South Florida, where we were the first east-coast beach city in the United States to have the Moat Beach Conditions Reporter. Basically, our lifeguards report every morning of the current ocean conditions, so then where the public can go to visitbeaches.org, they can go to the app, Visit Beaches, on their smartphone, and they can look at the current ocean conditions reported by the lifeguards. And the lifeguards have the ability to update this as conditions change. We went from in-person beach safety training to where we were teaching well over 2,000 people a year on beach and ocean safety through various community groups, to where we then went to a virtual platform, to where we were still able to successfully present to the community in a COVID-safe environment. So, using GoToMeeting and the RingCentral platform, we were able to teach well over 600 people in beach and ocean safety this year. We did change our phone number so that for continuity purposes, when our phone line goes down due to the aging structure of the lifeguard station, we would be able to automatically transfer that phone number to an Ocean Rescue officer's cell phone or to another phone to where we can pick it up via the computer. We emphasized a select option for callers, so we were finding out that people were calling our lifeguard station rather than 911 for life-threatening emergencies. Having the option to select a keypad choice changed that dramatically. We've updated our website with also the contents of our website, and we updated the type of contact forms via the city's website and the volunteer lifesaving corps website. We really did a big emphasis in social media this year. At one point, we were seeing really, really bad rescues. We were rescuing almost up to the 30s on a Friday and Saturday combined. We were expecting on Sunday to have the same conditions with beautiful weather. We did a big social media campaign using also our notification system, to where our analytics showed that we impacted more than 12,000 people in five hours via our social media, website, and notification system. So, we're really seeing the benefit of that, and we're trying to harp on all of our community members and our visitors to follow us on social media. We worked with the City of Jacksonville Emergency Preparities Division, the State of Florida Division of Emergency Management, and we were able to get a partnership through the City of Jacksonville Beach to have a weather station live in Jacksonville Beach at our pier. Not only is this going to be able to provide, and this has provided, lifeguards with real-time adequate weather conditions to determine how we're going to evacuate our beaches in the case of an emergency, but also gives our beachgoers a sense of two different beach cameras, 360, I'm sorry, 180-degree beach cameras, as well as the ability for Baytersham beachgoers to view what the beach is like and what the beach conditions are like at any time, 24/7, 365. If the battery dies, it has a solar panel that will last for another three days. Tech support's been amazing, and then also one step further, there's interactive activities for people who visit the website. Through the great partnership of Director Fatidis and City Manager Stefan Opel, we-- Sorry.
It's her worst.
Yes, sorry about that. We were able to edit our safety sign to where we've now decreased the sign blight, as I call, to where now we've had three signs go into one sign. We have our beach flags, red current, common beach infractions. We worked with the Jackson Beach Police Department to see what are the most common beach infractions that you are citing, that you were giving warnings to. We posted those up on here, and then we gave some safety message, also with a QR code, to directly to our website so that they can see beach conditions, alerts, and notifications. We hope to have these signs in four months ago, but because of COVID, the materials were delayed, so that will be our winter project. We'll be replacing these signs with one sign. We already stressed about the beach safety classes, but the volunteer lifesaving corps also conducts public safety classes in various ways. We have beach safety, created a course called Beach Safety for the Hospitality Workers, where we go up to the hotels to teach their workers how to inform their guests on beach safety. Not necessarily just what about beach safety, but how to inform their guests on beach safety. We teach stop the bleed, hands-only CPR, general first aid CPR and AED, and then also a new program that we work with the schools on is beach lifeguarding for the education worker, as we see a lot of our charter schools and small private schools coming to the beach. How can those teachers be a lifeguard for their kids? Another interesting thing is our medical director for both the corps and the city created a SurfMed 101, to where he will teach his residency with the support of our lifeguards all about beach-specific emergencies and water emergencies. Going into more of the operations and administration of the division and the corps, COVID-19 did not hinder us one bit. We were completely active. We continued to perform calls for service. We assisted Jackson Beach Police with monitoring the beach during the beach shutdown, and after that, we still did modified beach staffing. Our lifeguards did catch COVID-19 at various times, but we ensured that there was modified beach staffing regulations in place to ensure that we would not lose any towers. One thing that we've seen and that we have done, that we continue to do even after our COVID-19 procedures, is we've increased our truck patrols. We received a lot of inquiries on lifeguard towers in certain areas, adding lifeguard towers in parts of the beach that usually there's not a lifeguard tower at, because they saw an increase of beachgoer population. But what we've done is we've increased our truck patrols, meaning our trucks will do beach patrols in those areas more so than other areas. We enhanced our beach staffing at busier areas, as mentioned earlier, and then we flexed our Ocean Rescue officer hours to decrease the after-hours response, because an after-hours response is defined as lifeguards not on standby for an Ocean Rescue emergency. Our basic life support functions continue to grow with our medical direction. This year, we introduced Narcan to our Ocean Rescue Response Kit, and we have successfully saved four people through the Narcan administration, and two of them would have been in cardiac arrest if we did not administer the Narcan within the three-minute additional window. Our accreditation, we are an advanced agency with the United States Lifesaving Association. About, I would say, four to, four or five years ago, we were a basic agency. We enhanced our response module to then become an advanced agency. Our lifeguards have received national awards from the Act of Valor Recipient Association with the United States Lifesaving Association, as well as with the American Red Cross, and we also have received national accreditation and award recognition for the National Beach Safety Campaign. We continue to increase our opportunities for supervisors and assistant supervisors through performance growth training, as well as working with other beaches to enhance the Northeast Florida response.
Questions? Do we have a question for Mr. Jansen?
No question, just a statement. As a former first responder, I just want to express my sincere gratitude for what you guys do. That's amazing work right there, and the amount of hours that are put into there, it's overwhelming to me to see how much tragedy you prevent by being out there and being on that front line for us. So, thank you, and pass on my thanks to your staff and your lifeguards.
I will. Thank you very much. We definitely have what we call an epic team.
Guys, it's a whole lot of improvements and a whole lot of stuff that Max and my team have accomplished. It's more improvements than I've seen in my entire time here. I've been here for a couple days at least. But one of the things that all those numbers and all those accomplishments don't talk about is what's sitting in the back of the room back here. In 27 years, I've never been prouder of the team that I get the privilege to lead, the character, the integrity, the work ethic that has developed, and there's no way it's all due to our leadership. We're just really lucky to have a really awesome crew and an awesome bunch of alumni, and just a really diverse team that, I'm telling you, I've been around the world, I've been in the military, I've been in other cities, but I never worked with a bunch of young people that are this dedicated and just really great at what they do and is, just because they love doing it. You see all this up here on the screen. What you don't see is their daily dedication, showing up to work in good conditions, bad conditions, whether it's a long, hot summer. Some people don't work outside in the heat, and some people don't have to deal with some of the clients that we have to deal with that maybe are of, you know, a little different background than most of us. But I've watched them handle a lot of stressful situations with professionalism, and I've watched them deal with-- watched them deal with things that maybe they don't want to do, or things that maybe none of us want to do, and that's one of the reasons I'm really glad that you guys gave us a chance to recognize a few of them, and I want to recognize all of them, because I'm serious. I've been here since 1994 lifeguarding, and I'm really, really proud of every one of them and how they've advanced and grown, and I just look at every single face and think about what you were like when you first showed up here, or you were like when you -- and you guys have really proven yourself to me, so all this isn't possible without you, and all this doesn't mean a whole lot without every day, my whole schedule being full of you guys and girls. Thank you. That's all I got.
So, thank you so much, Captain Max and Captain Rob, and thank you to all of you who attended. It's nice to see you with shoes on. I am really honored to be also a member of the Volunteer LifeSaving Corps Board of Directors, so I get to see a little more firsthand what you guys are doing on a daily basis, the challenges that you're facing, both on the beach, in the building, all of that, and I just thank you so much for all that you do. As you heard even Greg McGarry talking about favorable, our beach is a destination. It's the number-one reason why visitors say they're coming to Duval County. So the second is, or not beaches, is St. Johnstown Center. So I'll pick the beach any day, and the reason that we can do that, we can handle those volumes of visitors and our residents alike, is because you guys are out there, sitting on those chairs, driving those trucks every single day, and that, the number of volunteer hours, that's just incredible, that you guys are volunteering out there on days, you know, when the rest of us are having cookouts and riding bikes up and down the beach. You guys are out there working hard for us, so I just appreciate you all so much, and I'm really honored to be able to present. While you all are wonderful and amazing, there are two standouts that are being recognized this year, and this is the first time that the Ocean Rescue is doing awards. The Volunteer LifeSaving Corps does awards every year. Separately, the Award Selections Committee for both of these organizations picked the same two people for each of these awards, so I think that is just saying so much about the people that we're about to recognize. Do you want to? I'll start reading. So, the Lifeguard of the Year for the Jacksonville Beach Ocean Rescue and the Volunteer LifeSaving Corps. This lifeguard joined Jackson Beach Lifeguards in the summer of 2017, and since then, has been in, oh, in 2017, oh, there, we're correct, has been involved in more than 15 rescues. By the way, when they asked me to join the board, I'm like, "Am I going to have to go in the water after anyone?", and they said, "No." I was like, "Okay, I'll join, because I am not qualified." This is amazing. Thirty first aid incidents and has more than 800 volunteer hours with the Volunteer LifeSaving Corps. This lifeguard is a go-getter. He shows pride in his work and is always there to provide a helping hand when needed. He was voted unanimously by both the --
Can't change.
-- Ocean Rescue Division Officers and the Volunteer LifeSaving Corps Officers. I am so proud to present the 2021 Lifeguard of the Year and Surfman of the Year Award to Christopher Daniels.
Just hang out here. I'll do a quick picture again.
Okay, our Rookie Lifeguard of the Year. This rookie lifeguard joined Jackson Beach Lifeguards in the winter of 2021. She has been involved, so what month is that, like?
It would be January.
Okay, so, so almost a full year. Has been involved in numerous calls for service and has more than 250 volunteer hours worked. She is always willing to stay late and assist others until the job is done, truly showing the core values of the Jacksonville Beach Lifeguards' epic team. Got in there again. The Rookie Lifeguard, this Rookie Lifeguard was unanimously voted by both the Ocean Rescue Division Officers and the Volunteer LifeSaving Corps Officers. I present 2021 Rookie Lifeguard of the Year and Recruit Surfman of the Year to honor that.
Two minutes. That's not for a second. One minute. Relax. Two minutes. Beautiful. All right, then, let's sit back in. Okay, everybody ready?
Thank you. All right. If you are uncomfortable wearing closed-toe shoes right now, come on up. You know who you are. All the lifeguards. We're going to do a group photo really quick, right in front of the dais so the council can be in it. Right out, right out. Right out, come on, come on over this way.
No, I can't see everybody.
Can you get up on a chair?
I don't think so.
Get up on a chair. We can do famous lifeguards.
Sorry. So glad. Okay, everybody, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Mayor Hahn said that that was a unanimous decision, and it was, but that was not an easy decision, because like I said, we were like, wow, there's quite a few up here that could easily be getting that award, and we can't do it without any one of you. I need every single one of you, and I need some more, please. Yeah, there's only a couple of awards, but I want to give you all my thanks. You guys all get an award for us, I'm concerned. It's been the best team ever, so thank you.
You can go ahead and go. That's your call. We appreciate all you do, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Hahn.
Okay, thank you for indulging us in this presentation, and we will move back on to our agenda. Item A, do we have a presentation from Chief Smith?
Good evening, Council. Gene Paul Smith, Chief of Police. This is kind of the culmination of a lot of years as a young SWAT officer and the team commander for a long time. This has been a project of mine for the last 26 years, and we're going to, I'm going to go into it in a minute. Basically, it's the approved or disapproved, the purchase of a special operation vehicle for $138,850. Let's look at those pictures, but real quick, I wanted to mention, if I can vary from the program just a little. My team was involved in an incident in Nassau County. I received a call Friday night when they were doing the manhunt for the suspect who killed a deputy from a two-star chief of JSO requesting our assistance, which was flattering enough. And then he said his team, it was, been out all day, that we might have to cover callouts for the night in Jacksonville, which was, sent a shiver up my spine because I only have 15 people, but we were ready to go. He called me next morning and said, "Please deploy up there." And SWAT Commander Tom Bingham was behind me, and his team leader took the team up, and for two days, they must have walked 20, 30 miles in full kit. The first day, I heard strictly from JSO Command that they were about 10% of the total SWAT team guys that were out there, and they cleared 50% of the houses on the first day, just them. For the second day, some of the teams were sent home. Our team was requested to stay, and by far, we were the only police department there. They're all sheriff's offices, and by far, we were the smallest agency there, and we just furthered our awesome reputation. I received all kinds of thank yous and good jobs. Silent professionals in the back of the room, but I feel they needed some of my accolades because there's no more probably righteous cause in the search for a cop killer than, except for maybe save a child, and they performed wonderfully and they should be commended. So a big one. This is for an armored vehicle. As you know, I presented part of this at council. This is a picture of the van, it's fully armored, rifle rounds and windshield and rim-flap tires and everything else. They're a transport, how many, Tom?
Up to 12.
Up to 12. And it's, like I said, it's been a long time coming. The company here, the senior St. Augustine, is called International Armor Group, and it is truly international. They make armored vehicles from military and police departments and all over the world. They also make armored pickups, trucks, vans, Suburbans, cars for VIPs and stuff like that. They truly are a wonderful company, and they're right here in St. Augustine. They're also on the GSA list, and the purchase comes out of federal equitable sharing, although it is money. It is taken from our seizure money, and there's no impact on the general fund. Like I said, this has been a long time coming, with all the reasons we've had to deploy, especially with the last two years, with all the things that have been going on in the city. I think it's been a long time coming, and it really is something to keep us safe, and we will use it. And this is a lifetime vehicle. This will be my last, personal last armored vehicle. Probably most of y'all up there, too, this is a 15-year vehicle. This is the first new one we've ever had that was specifically designed for this, and we can use it for mobile field force, for surveillance, for quick reaction teams, for SWAT callouts as a mobile shield. It really is a very versatile vehicle. It's kind of like us, very unassuming, but very capable. That's all I have. Any questions?
Chief, go ahead and get a motion.
I agree that we approve the purchase of a special operation vehicle in the amount of $138,850, and declare International Armor Group a sole source provider for future specialized maintenance.
Second. We have a motion in second. Mr. Mesa.
Yes, Chief, I'm all in. I think this is very necessary for your department, for the guys to be safe. Second, when is the delivery time?
They're a little backed up now. Of course, they did order four vans ahead of time, anticipating this tonight, so we have a van waiting on us, probably at the short end, eight weeks, long end, 12 weeks, depending on how, so turnaround's fairly quick.
And then when it gets here, are we able to come check it out and sit on it and pretend we're coming?
Counsel will see it, definitely. I'll provide it to you if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I'm sorry, I didn't see who's late. Come on first, I'll go with Mr. Jansen.
Yeah, the only question I have is, you have a 15-man team, which three have to drive the old car?
We're going to probably do some outriggers, invite them on the outside. We will, and that helps with our deployment, and we'll make them ride in a different vehicle if we have to, or put them on somebody's lap.
There you go.
Ms. Golding.
So, Chief, I went to the website, and actually, the first thing I saw looked like a tank, and I was like, "Oh, my gosh, is that what we're getting?", and then, but then I saw that one, so I was like, "Okay, that's, that's a little more, you know, is less, less obvious, right?", as a tank is. But I noticed on the website that they offer a vehicle demo option, and so, do we have experience with this type of vehicle, and did we, or do we do a demo or anything like that?
We, we served a homicide warrant in Jacksonville, JSO SWAT Service Force, my homicide detectives. So they had, they were testing one at the time, so we got to walk around and look at it, ride in for a short period, and also the TAC guys were down at the company last week checking out the operation, and they're actually building up a van, so yes, we do have experience with it. And actually, the maintenance is fairly simple. The armor is armor unless it's hit, and the vehicle, the vehicle is just a straight S350 chassis and engine, so it is very serviceable, and if we do get it shot up, God forbid, we'll get the armor replaced and bond those for the bullet holes, and we're good to go.
I look forward to seeing it when it gets in.
I will make sure you do.
I don't see any other questions from council. Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call? Councilmember Duong?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes, motion carries.
You're a great epic team. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, item D, Dennis Barron takes the stand.
Dennis Barron, Director of Public Works. I don't have anything near as exciting as an armored car. However, I do have a water pump rental that I need to get approval for. This pump was originally rented in November of last year, the, or October of last year. It was intended to keep it for a short time to be able to get through a contractor rebuilding lift station number two. Because of all the supply chain issues, pump issues and things, we are still renting that same pump, and now we're pressing over the amount of dollars that I'm allowed to spend with the city manager's approval to continue renting this pump. So what we're asking for is to carry this pump, the rental, up and through January of '22, which will get us, we are really close to being able to give the contractor control of this lift station. The minute we do, as part of their contract, they take over bypass pumping. We've talked about maybe using this at another lift station for the couple of months to be able to get through the finish of hurricane season and ensure we don't have any problems. Lift station two, the generator, I've never seen such an old thing in my life, but it's there, which is not working, which is kind of why we put this pump in place until we can get the entire lift station redone, including a new generator. So that's the need we have, is to approve this bill in the amount of $35,487, which will get us up through January of '22.
Thank you. Can we get a motion?
I agree that we approve the emergency pump rental for the pollution control plant, lift station number two, from Sunbelt Rental, in the amount of $35,487.
Second. We have a motion in second. Any questions or comments from council? Madam Clerk, roll call. Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember Duong?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman? Yes. Thank you. Can, can you bring the pump so that we can check it out and play around on it?
I may let you see it if you'd like to. Won't be near as much fun. I'll let Chief Paul's van tow it to you.
Deal. All right. Item C, Sunshine Park, Sunshine Playground. All right, Trevor, what you got?
Trevor Hughes, Superintendent Parks and Recreation. Parks and Recreation, an epic team, is very proud and excited to present what we hope is the final design of Sunshine Playground. The original design for Sunshine Playground was based from the details that was put within our RFP. Once the RFP went out and through the process, we polled our community, and the biggest responses from our community is, we love the concept, we love the history, we love more shape, more space, and more swings. So we took, we took back to the designer, and we presented those things to them. Also, part of the original design, we had, it was a castle and a climbing wall, and we did not feel that a castle was fit for a vibrant coastal community that embraces the beachline. So we asked to change the castle to our iconic lifeguard stand. We've also asked them to incorporate into the climbing wall our iconic lifeguard towers. And so with these added features, along with the rise in material costs, has put our number up slightly above what we had expected. So we're coming today to ask for approval of the, one, approving the final design, and two, approving the $547,000 that will be charged to the South NCRAs.
Thank you. Mr. Hughes, can we get a motion?
I'll do it separately. I agree that we approve the final design of the Sunshine Playground at South Beach Park by Play by Design LLC.
Second, we have a motion in second. Any questions or comments from council? Mr. Mesa.
Beautiful design. I posted the pictures on Facebook, and just the feedback was amazing, and a lot of people are excited, looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to it, and hopefully I could take my girlfriend's kit there and play around. I wish I was a kid again.
Ms. Golding.
Yeah, I would just like to say I love, absolutely love. Yeah, I would just like to say, I love, absolutely love, the lifeguard station, the fact that that's been incorporated. We won't be a castle, you're right. We need the lifeguard station, and, and the water tower is great, too. So, this is great. You guys have done a great job, and thank you so much for working with the community, especially the people. I know I've heard from the ladies that did this playground to begin with, and they're very happy with how things have come along with this. So, thank you so much for all that you're, you're doing.
Thank you, Ms. Golding. I was gonna say that, too, that you incorporated the people who were involved in the original playground, and I thought that was really special and important to make sure that they were on board, and I think they're on board in a really big way. And then, to have the kind of community open house at the actual park where you could point to things and, and show the banner with everything out on it was really a great way to do it. So, thank you for that. Seen the other links? Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. There was one more point that I, I wanted to bring up, my fault, I left it out. We do expect to begin construction in the next two to three weeks, and it will be completed end of March, 1st of April. I'm sorry, I left it out.
That's exciting news. Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember DuMau?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Item two under that one.
I'm going to re-approve the appropriating of an additional $547,708 of South End tax increment trust funds to cover the Sunshine Playground at South Beach Park. Final design construction cost of $1,675,700, plus a 15% contingency for a total amount of $1,927,000.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or questions from council? Seeing Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember DuMau?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes. So, this wasn't, we pushed this up, this was 2023, wasn't it, originally planned for? So, great job. And that was a really aggressive push, so you guys have, have really delivered, and I'm so excited that it's gonna start so quickly. All right, who's talking about Seawalk Pavilion? Mr. Fatidis.
Jason Fatidis, Parks and Recreation. Good evening, council. This item is for, to approve the renovation of the roof system at the Seawalk Pavilion. In short, that roof is due to be replaced or renovated. It was, I think, constructed in 2001, so it's over 20 years old. We have chosen the renovation as opposed to the replacement for more practical and economic purposes. We do have experience with this type of roof system when we replaced the O&amp;N roof systems, I think, in 2015. And those roof systems, with two hurricanes, a very durable, good system, and at the end of 20 years, we'll be able to do the same project at a third of the cost. I do have the representative of our vendor here tonight to answer any technical questions. So, we're asking you to approve $186,000 for the renovation tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Fatidis, motion.
I'm going to re-approve the roof restoration project at the Seawalk Pavilion by waterproofing technologies incorporated in the amount of $186,000.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion by council? Seeing Madam Clerk, we'll call.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember DuMau?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, on to resolutions. The budget minutes, who's got this? AJ?
Yep.
What's the guy's name from Price is Right? That's who I feel like today. Come on, look at him.
So, are you Bob Barker?
Not here, the first one. Bob Barker? All right, go ahead. Don't want me to distract you.
I'm AJ Soto. I'm the budget officer. I am here to present the year-end budget modification for fiscal year 2021, which ended a month ago. What we do in finance is, after the mid-year modification gets brought to council, we continue to keep track of all of the items which council and the CRA approves for appropriation that was not part of the original budget. We compile it and present it to you here in resolution format for formal adoption. At this point, I'll take any questions from the council, because the mod was pretty self-explanatory in terms of what we're amending and when council approved it.
Let's go ahead and get a motion on the table. Oh, actually, first, Madam Clerk, will you read the resolution, please?
A resolution amending the operating budget of the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2020 and ending September 30th, 2021.
Thank you. And a motion?
I'm going to re-adopt resolution number 2091-2021, amending the operating budget of the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida for the fiscal year beginning October 1st, 2020 and ending September 30th, 2021.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or comments from council? Ms. DuMau?
Just want to thank the finance team for a great job, as always.
Did it. Any others? Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Councilmember DuMau?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. Item, resolution B, street names, honorary street name designations.
I'm here because the Parks and Rec Department recently received three more applications for our honorary street sign program, specifically for the fallen wartime military veterans. These applications came with sufficient documentation to substantiate that each nominee was a Jack's Beach resident and was indeed a veteran that was killed in action. I don't know if you got to read all of their applications, but they did all attend Fletcher High and it took close to home. So, we're here to ask council tonight if you approve of these applications.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you read the resolution by title?
A resolution of the City of Jacksonville Beach, Florida, approving applications and honorary street name designation sign locations for fallen wartime military veterans under the honorary street sign designation policy, authorizing sign installation, providing for adoption of recitals, repeal of prior inconsistent resolutions and council decisions, severability, and ineffective date.
Thank you. Before we read the motion, we do have one speaker card from Mr. Lenny Jevick, if you want to come up and address the council.
Good evening, Lenny Jevick, Lenny Beach resident. I'm the Beaches Veterans Memorial Park historian. I am proud to nominate three additional fallen veterans to the Jacksonville Beach City Council. Marcus Prudhomme, who I'd just like to honor his sister, Gulf Star Sister Jessica Prudhomme, being with us. We owe her a great deal of respect. We're sorry for your loss, and we will guarantee we will never forget Marcus. Marcus, 2004 graduate from Fletcher High School, worked at the Beach Hot Cafe. He was a cook there at 16, learned how to cook from his father, Jean Francois. He got killed when an attacker, suicide attacker walked into a municipal building in Ambar Province in Iraq and blew, detonated, and he got killed along with 22 others, including his commanding officer. Marcus had ambitions to leave, leave the military after his enlistment, and had big dreams, but they never was able to attain, so we owe him a great deal of respect. Philip O'Hammond, he was with the Fletcher in 1946, 1947. He enlisted in Marines in 1948, when he was 17 years old. He got killed, I'm just saying, he was presumed, he went missing in 1950 at the Chosen Reservoir Campaign, when his, the United States forces were outnumbered three to one. He went missing in 1950, and he was presumed dead in 1953. His body was never recovered. He had also, he's a two-time Purple Heart recipient for actions prior to that. And lastly, we have Johnny Franks. Johnny was a 1966 graduate from Fletcher High School, promising baseball career ahead of him. He went and played at Florida State, and he got killed when him, his vehicle that he was riding in, they were being attacked, and they were moving towards their location with his other troops, and the vehicle rolled over, and all three got killed inside that vehicle. So, I am proud to and honored to present that to you. And I thank you, with this, these three, that bring the total in Jacksonville Beach up to 10, and the Beaches community up the other, bring it up to 19 between Eptim Beach and Atlantic Beach. And I can't tell you how many people from around the area have, they're amazed that with Jacksonville Beach and all the other Beaches communities are doing, so for honoring veterans. I can't thank Molly enough, she's wonderful.
Thank you, Ms. Jevick. We'll go ahead and get a motion.
I'm going to re-adopt resolution number 2093-2021, approving applications for honorary street name designations.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from council? Ms. Golding.
Yeah, I just want to thank Lenny for all that you're doing and to, and for sharing this with all of us, because we, we all need to be aware, and, and it's really good to be able to see the signs throughout the community. I really hope that we can do something with the QR codes or something like that, so that, like, when we get our urban trail in, you know, people who are walking or biking or whatever, they can stop and maybe they can pull the information up, and they can learn more about these, these heroes that, that we need to be remembering. So, thank you for all that you're doing to bring them to the front for, for those of us.
Thank you, Ms. Golding. Mr. Stokes?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say the same thing, so I'll keep it brief. Really appreciate all the work that Lenny's doing and the work that this council did to, to get this off the ground. But as a history person who has read countless books on all, all of these, it's, it's really awesome that our community is, is honoring these fallen heroes, and just wanted to also say thank you for coming to Corporal, I'm sorry, Proud Brothers, Sister. Thank you so much for joining us this evening and, and coming here and allowing us to honor your, your brother's sacrifice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Mr. Mesa?
Same thing. I appreciate everything you're doing. I think this is a great program as a veteran. I remember hearing the news about Marcus and being in the service industry, there was kids from Fletcher that I knew, and they were talking about him. And when I saw the damage, brought back flashbacks from 2008, when the news broke and people were talking about it, so I'm, I'm very glad we're doing this. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember DuMau?
Yes.
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Mayor Hoffman?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you so much. Will they be at Veterans Day?
Yes, well, yes, I believe so. That's one minute. Jessica, can I come up real quick? With the support of Jacksonville Beach City Council, and on behalf of the Beaches Veterans Memorial Park Committee, we'd like to present you with your brother's sign as a replica of what will be up and forever.
Thank you, guys. I'm a public speaker, but I do want to thank all you guys for, never forgetting about the veterans in the fall and, and everything y'all have done for my brother and my family, and I really appreciate it from the bottom of my heart. Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Still one more item. Sorry.
Good evening, Council.
There's somebody's got a phone.
I'm sorry. Good evening, Councilman Bruce Moore, I'm the facility manager of golf course. Tonight's item just has three very simple rate increases. One for our senior rates, one for our beach pass holder weekend rate, and one for our range ball average price rate. The beach pass holder rate and the senior rate are for 18-hole riding only. No other changes to the walking or the nine-hole for either one of those. So, there would be, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you read the resolution? Sorry.
A resolution by the City of Jacksonville Beach, amending golf course rates, charges, and fees, providing definitions and guidelines for the golf operation policies, delegating authority to city manager, repealing resolution number 2069-2020, and providing ineffective date.
Thank you. And a motion?
I'm going to re-adopt resolution 2094-2021, amending rates for the Jacksonville Beach golf course.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Ms. Golding?
I just want to make a small comment, because I talked to one of our senior golfers, and she was really glad to hear that, that the walking rate was not changing. But she did raise a really good point that I just want to share, and that is, please consider not raising senior rates very much, because the seniors are typically on fixed incomes, and so, if we can raise other rates, you know, that would be preferred, because the seniors do love playing our course, but their, their income is limited. But she, but she was very grateful that the walking rate was not changing, so just want to put that out there to keep that in mind with regard to our seniors. Thank you.
And we do have, just so you know, we do have the least expensive senior rate anywhere in northeast Florida, not just as the most, the least expensive, but offered the most days of the week. So, we are still well, well, well below our competitive spot for senior ages.
Any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Golding?
Yes.
Councilmember Jansen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mesa?
Yes.